To order the March 4th regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury zoning commission. First order of business is appointment of alternates. We know David Ryan will not be here tonight, so Vaughn Marecki will sit in for him. Next would be the approval of the minutes of the February 4th regular meeting. Will you get a chance to read through them?
I have one comment. Line 212, it was a statement that I made. Makes reference to mixed-use property, and what I said was mixed-income property. Make that clarification, please.
Any other comments or reviews on the minutes? With that suggested change, we'll adopt the minutes of the February 4th meeting. Item four, consent agenda items. Application number 1305 of Burke Leclerc, business manager of Simsbury Public Schools, agent for town and Simsbury owner for assigned permit for central school on property located at 29 Socko Street. You just go through all of, you want to go through all of these?
Sure.
So, that is recommended to be approved. Design Review Board had made one suggestion in a color change, which I assume the school is all right with.
Correct.
Okay. And we like the blue rather than red. Is this edge showing up? Something to do with the high school colors? There should be this.
Blue and gold.
Blue and gold, California gold and bears. All right. Okay. So we'll move all of these at the end. Second is the application number 1311 of M.E.S. Park, agent for Robert G. Holloway, owner for assigned permit for Twinkle Nail and Spa on property located at 1386 Hot Meadows Street.
Good to see you, sir.
Again, this information is in the packet. Design Review Board unanimously recommended that. And the third is the application 1312 of Tony Giorgio, owner of Dorset Crossing LLC, owner for assigned permit for St. Francis Care in New England Urgent Care on property located at 30 Dorset Crossing Drive. Again, this sign already exists, but they want, they're asking that they have a larger one for both recognition and the people know where to go, so. These are all recommended for approval by the staff. Any questions on any of these?
Just have one comment, Mr. Chairman. On that last sign, because it is an oversized sign, I just want to make a note for the record that the section of the regulations that apply are Article 10, Section C, 3A. And that specifically doesn't limit attached signs to 32 square feet, especially in this case when it's an urgent care sign. I just want to make that note for the record.
But all three signs do meet all our regs.
I had a question on the last one.
Yeah.
Looking for the pictures. There were two options with the New England Urgent Care. One had the urgent care as part of a stethoscope, the other was not. Is one of the two that we're, we considering both?
I actually took it that the old sign had the stethoscope, and the new sign does not.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the common, that one.
Yeah, it's easier to read and larger.
Okay, great.
Should I need a motion for approval of all three of these?
I'm of approval of the consent agenda items 1, 2, 3.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Great.
Is that going to be here tonight?
No.
So should I get a?
Well, Ned's an alternate also.
Oh, that's all right.
So.
Sorry. Apologies.
That's all right. Okay. All right, let's move to the call for the public hearing.
Legal notice, Town of Simsbury, zoning commission, regular meeting. The zoning commission of the Town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held on Monday, March 4th, 2013, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Simsbury Town Office's 933 Hot Meadows Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following. One, application 13-03 of Barbara Foley, Ron Foley Foundation, agent for Robert Patricelli, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a one-day event on the property located at 79 Hartford Road, MAP G16, Block 110, Lot 002, Zone R80. Item two, application 13-06 of Mark Lebedkin, agent for RSP Simsbury LLC, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of proposed events on the property located at 10 Mallway, MAP G10, Block 227, Lot 1A, plus RR, Zone Simsbury Center 3. Item number three, application 1307 of Gerard G. Tonner, agent for Town of Simsbury, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of proposed events on the property located at 22 Iron Horse Boulevard, MAP H9, Block 226, Lot 003A, Zone SC3 and SC4. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communication will be received. A copy of the above is on file in the office of the town clerk, 933 Hot Meadows Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, for public inspection. Edward J. Pabbert, secretary, dated this 15th day of February 2013, at Simsbury, Connecticut.
Thank you, Ed. So we'll start with Barbara Foley, Ron Foley Foundation.
Thank you.
Could you please use the microphone, because this is being recorded.
Hi.
Oh, so, just a brief overview of the event.
Sure, sure. Ron's Run for the Roses is a Kentucky Derby event. We have it every year. It's the Keystone fundraiser for the Ron Foley Foundation, formerly the Ron Foley Pancreatic Cancer Foundation. We have raised over $240,000 in five years. This is our fifth year, our fourth year at Foley Farm.
And this event is no different than the past events?
No.
And it's, we have the date, and it's, what are the hours?
It's May 4th, Saturday, May 4th, from 3:00 to 7:00.
Okay. Any questions? We've done this before. All right, thank you. We'll vote on these at the end.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I think we can get through these. All right, second would be Mark Lebedkin. Mark?
Greetings.
Thank you.
We'd like to do a beer garden event five times a year at the Courtyard Building utilizing the courtyard space. It's a beautiful setting. It's nothing new to what we did in November, very successful. We cordoned it off, we had security, we served beverages, alcohol and beer outside at a separate bar area, provided a food tent, and people congregated around the heat lamps. We want to do the same. Our intent is coming weekend, two weekends from now, St. Patrick's weekend, so we want to have some music outside, Irish music for St. Patrick's Day weekend. We want to do a craft brewers' festival, where we're going to bring in the craft brewers from around the area, Back East, Hooker, et cetera, et cetera, in early June. Then a home brewers' festival and competition, which is going to be cosponsored by Sierra Nevada, for all the home brewers in the area to come and sample their wares and see how they stand up to the big boys. And then we want to repeat our beer garden in November. And then we want to try a winter festival. We don't have a date yet, because I want to see what the snow looks like, but we want to do a, I'm an ice carver as well, so we want to do an ice carved bar for the shots and the drinks and the food and fires. It should be fun.
Okay. And the hours of all of these will be?
Three to 10:00 for some, and noon to 10:00 for others. We're doing it later during the season when Linda Gilino is having a lot of bridal events at her hair salon, so it doesn't interfere.
Okay.
And we did get signatures from everybody in the courtyard that's going to be there.
My next question is, okay. So all of your?
They're all very happy to do it.
Okay.
It brings a lot of awareness to the Courtyard Building and.
And how late is the pub itself open?
During the week, we're allowed to be open until 1:00, and on the weekends, 2:00. We never are. We're always closed earlier. We don't want to be a last-call bar.
And so in November, when you close down, of course, that was a pretty cold night, but when you close down the outside?
At 10:00.
The people, that was, you didn't have a problem breaking up the party?
No, it was, no.
And this down?
No.
Okay.
There's one of, on here, you did have a date, so you're saying you don't want to try to use the date for the January 18th?
That's our goal.
Well, that's your goal.
But you saw this winter. I don't want to be locked into that actual 18th.
No, it's fine.
I want to use a Saturday in January. If we have another big snowstorm, obviously, it's not going to happen that weekend.
Right. Is there a need for us to know, and how much beforehand do we need to know if we have to have a specific date?
Hyrum?
Yeah, I'd say probably what the commission ought to do, if you decide to approve this, is note that the January 18th date is there, but if the date changes, I would say two weeks prior to that, if possible, let the staff know, so that in case there are any planning issues that need to occur with regard to the police or whatever, they can take care of that. Obviously, if it's a day before and you have a huge storm, we'd understand.
Sure, absolutely.
And parking, Mark? What do you, you just use those lots across the street?
We use the lots across the street, the Richmond Building, we use the commuter lot, and behind where the street is, we have parking there.
Could you please, Mark, go a little more into the, I'm curious about how you control who's in there and who's able to go to the bar, and it's.
We are 21-over facility, which means if you come and you're under 21, you need to be with a parent or legal guardian. We do check IDs, we have a security team, we use the wristbands, we cordon off the entrance and the archway.
So you are controlling who's coming and going?
Absolutely.
Into the whole courtyard?
Is the security third-party, or is it people, friends, part of the bar?
Generally, our investors and friends. We're not the kind of bar where we need military-grade security.
Understood, but when it's outside, it's a little different.
All right, any other questions for Mark over here? All right.
Thank you.
And then, application 1307, Jerry Tonner.
I'm here on behalf of the Performing Arts Center Board, and as you know, in the past, the PAC Board has come in more or less on individual permission to serve alcohol at their events. This is more, I think, to streamline that process and hopefully get a blanket permission that will allow our manager to enter an agreement for individual events down there. In many cases, it's a bit, it's an important piece of the proposal to get entertainment in here. This would not preclude us going through the, all the permission processes with the Board of Selectmen and through the public gathering process. In Hyrum's memo, he outlines, you know, the major dates, September Fest, the Hartford Symphony. There are a number of proposals out right now to try and bring in other events, and so this would allow, you know, us to go forward in a little more timely manner. Again, all our servers would be tip-trained, tips-trained, and I said they would all go through all the, you know, the typical approval processes. Chairman and vice chairman of the PAC Board, Bob Henzling and Ferg Jansen are here tonight, and they can, Ferg oversaw the serving of beer and wine last year in the September Fest event, which I think went very, very well, from all, I think, from everyone's standpoint. So certainly, you know, either one of them could answer any more questions.
How many events last year had alcohol served, PAC-sponsored events?
I think we had September Fest, and we did not do any with the, with the symphony. We had the four concerts in the series. We had the four concerts in the series.
That's the big change this year, is you're going to, you want to have alcohol at most of those events.
We'd like to, we'd like to, yeah. And I think in dealing with the promoters, that can be, you know, certainly a piece of, you know, I think it's good for us, but also good in the, you know, in the whole proposal piece, yeah.
Yeah, Bob?
I just, there are, there's alcohol in different formats, so there could be alcohol where people bring their own bottle, if you will, to the events, like the Hartford Symphony. There are events where there's no alcohol, in some cases, we've had those too. And then there are others where we might be the vendor, as we were last year at September Fest. So in our model, if you will, there are four or five, three or four different choices that vendors or promoters can ask for when they come to us. And so based upon what they ask for, it kind of dictates to us what level of involvement alcohol is on our part. In some cases, people bringing in in wagons and carts and in their backpack, like the symphony. And in other cases, that might not be allowed at all, and in other cases, it might be both, and in some cases, it might be no alcohol at all.
Hey, Bob, we talked about this. If you have a vendor, are there going to be BY, bring your own?
I beg your pardon?
If you have a vendor, will people still be able to bring their own? Remember, that was a.
We'd like to have that. That'd be what I call the Tanglewood model. I would like to have it be like Tanglewood, where people can get it there if they wish, but they can also bring it in as they do at Tanglewood.
So what we're being asked to do is approve a series, or a permit basically, for the series for the season, so.
I think it makes sense.
All right. I will vote on these in a minute. Any other questions for Jerry while he's here? All right. These are public hearings, so does anyone from the audience have comments on any of the three applications? All right. Hyrum?
Mr. Chairman, if the commission does decide to approve the last one of 22 Iron Horse, if possible, if you could reference the February 4th memo that I wrote to the commission that talks about the fact that this specific case, it's interesting that the section 33, 30-33 of the general statutes concession permit, which is a big difference, so that will in fact be governed by the state as well, and people should understand that. And then the other restrictions that Jerry referred to, with regard to still coordinating the events with staff, is still there. And if there are rain dates, that's in the memo as well. So I think that will help everybody understand where we all are. So if you do decide to approve it, reference to that memo would be great. Thank you.
All right, last chance for public audience. So I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Second. All in favor, say aye. All right. I'd look for a motion to amend the agenda to vote on these three topics. Second. All in favor, say aye. All right, so we'll take these off one at a time. Any discussion or question on the Barbara Foley, Ron Foley Foundation request?
Hold on a little, that, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, that's approved. Second would be Mark Lebedkin's series, with the stipulation that the January date be, or that if a date needs to be moved, Mark, I mean, it's a long year, then you will give us ample warning or advance notice, so we can deal with that at the staff level. Any other questions, or need someone to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, great. And the last would be for the Town of Simsbury, for the Performing Arts Center. And I guess I would say we would stipulate the items that are in Hyrum's February 4th, and maybe be best, a memo just to be best to list those. Ask Hyrum if you could do that, I don't have it right in front of me. So specifically, that the town would still require group gathering permits as usual.
All events still require public gathering permit, being required by the zoning enforcement officer, coordinate any of the events proposed to be held at the pack. The pack manager or parks and recreation staff still need to draw all necessary permits or permission from the Board of Selectmen, from the Health District Police and State of Connecticut, if not required. And see, all events, including event dates, event main dates, event details and specifics about the event, have been made known to the CEO, along with advanced proposed performance or activity date, so that the public gathering permit coordination meeting can be scheduled if necessary and held prior to the event being held.
So with that, any other discussion? Looking for a motion, make a motion. We accept the proposal, we'll issue the permit, blanket permit. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all right, approved. Thank you, thank you all for coming. Good stuff. You're welcome to stay. Gets exciting from here.
Pretty bad when Bob and Ferg leave.
Yeah. All right, moving on to discussion of possible action on other agenda items, including application number 1308 of LADA PC Land Planners, agent for St. Catherine of Sienna Church, owner for site plan amendment for the expansion of the existing wetland crossing and parking modification on property located at 265 Stratton Brook Road.
Good evening. I am Terri Anne Han, principal of LADA PC Land Planners and site planners for the St. Catherine of Sienna Church. For those of you who are unfamiliar, St. Catherine of Sienna Church is located on Stratton Brook Road, just past the intersection with Farms Village and Old Farms Road. It is an existing church. Went through an addition, it could be as long as 10 years ago, I sort of lose track, but. And so this is the existing facility, they have an enter-in and out from this side, large parking lot in the middle, and an exit near the church. There's a rectory building located on the property itself. This is individual well and septic for the property. There's a corridor, a wetland corridor that goes through the middle of the site, and there's an existing mowed field out in the sort of back section of the site. There is an existing wetland crossing that comes right through the middle of the wetlands, there's a couple of pipes that go in there. And what we're proposing is that we're finding that the congregation is getting larger, and the parking lot, people are parking, we'd like to resolve that situation. So we're looking to create an overflow parking lot out the back using the existing field. The proposal is to expand the wetland crossing. It all comes in one direction, and to use the existing field, there's very little grading, it's about 5% or a little bit less now, so we use that for gravel parking lot. Come in off the corner, we have to redesign the, there's handicap spaces located at the front of the church, those would be removed for drop-off, because now we got circulation coming in and out. And so we would redesign that, come through. This is a one-way system, because for the most part, people are entering all at the same time, and people are exiting all at the same time. We wouldn't normally do that under regular circumstances, but given how they're going to use this, it seems like the best choice. So come in, and then this would be a pay for turnaround purposes for emergency vehicles, and then we'd have a gravel, stone parking lot on either side. We're doing some, like I said, minor reconfiguration over here for a drop-off area, and there's some minor reconfiguration of. Enables, because there's a little bit of a slope, and it's a little slippery, so we're just trying to get up here. Picking up a couple of parking spaces, because we've lost a number of parking spaces in this area, and then overall, increasing the number of parking spaces on the site. It is gravel, so striking these are a little overambitious. It'll never really park out that way, but we wanted to just be able to show what we're trying to get into here. There are no changes to the church itself, no changes to the septic or the well, or the number of people that would be in the church itself. We did look at a couple of different alternatives, there's a big lawn out in front here, and decided that that was probably the worst choice that we could come up with, in order to be able to deal with more parking on the site. This is a fairly dense woods through here for the wetlands, so you might be able to see in January vehicles, but for the most part, you won't really see these vehicles. The other thing is that they have two existing very tall poles over here with floodlights. We'd like to remove those and use regular shoebox lights around the perimeter of the site itself, so it'd be dark sky compliance. We'd have, there's 12-foot shoebox lights at the church, and we'll continue the 12-foot back to here, but not light this parking lot. All we're going to do is light the sidewalk. And then this area, we'll take those floodlights off and put 18-foot-high shoebox lights around the perimeter. We have been to, in the wetlands for a wetland permit, and they did approve that, and we have been to design review, and they didn't have any conditions or changes that they were recommending.
Go ahead.
Where are you relocating the handicap spots?
The handicap space are now moving in this area, so they're just right across. We have, right now, there's not quite the correct handicap ramps, so this whole area here will be flush, so it'll be a direct shot into the church.
So where the handicap people will park, you've got traffic kind of going all around them, right?
Well, it's essentially, you'll have to come across, that's correct. But there's stop signs here, and, you know, we tried to make that as safe as we possibly could.
The other question was, what's the reason for the decision not to light that back parking lot? Seems to me, there's a lot of evening events, right?
Well, not at that level. I mean, there's Christmas time, there would be some, but we wanted, we didn't want to be intrusive, and, you know, we could always add lights, we didn't think that that was our first choice.
And my question was the width of the, for lack of a better word, a bridge that now connects. Would it allow cars to pass one in each direction?
No, it's only 15 feet wide. You have to stop, there's a stop sign on each side here, and pull off so that you can get out. You know, you can clearly see it's flat at that level, and so you'll be able to see through.
So if you had a 9:30 and an 11 o'clock service, where people were leaving and coming at the same time, that wouldn't particularly work well.
Well, for the most part, everybody would be gone at a little bit before 10:30, they would, don't really come until 10 of.
All right.
And we can also modulate, if that becomes an issue, we can modulate the service times as well.
To follow up on that, is it because you really can't go wider because of the wetlands?
Well, we were concerned that it was a more, a less intrusive impact on the wetlands.
Yeah.
If we went this way.
Yeah, we could.
So we figured we'd add another about 300 square feet of disturbance, and we were already at 900 square feet of disturbance, so, you know, we were trying to keep it as modest as we possibly could.
Okay.
How often will you actually be using the second parking lot? Because you still have most of the spaces in your front lot, which is almost enough now.
Correct, yeah. Well, we would, we really, we would anticipate there might be a couple of cars there, probably once a week, and then at the heavier use weeks, then it will tend to be fuller. So it's not, it's either kind of a random, you know, sporadic use, or it will be used.
And the same number of spots will remain in the current parking structure?
Well, it's slightly less.
But because of the movement?
Yeah, I think we lost seven.
Okay. And how many are you adding in total, roughly? I mean.
We're adding, it's 141 approximately, about 140 we're adding. But it, like I said, it's not as efficient as it looks.
And I understand this is somewhat of a public safety issue, in that on days of high use now, people are actually parking on the street.
That's correct, and we're very concerned about that, and would like to provide a remedy.
So the surface is going to be just gravel?
It'll be, yeah, a gravel process top.
And so how do you corral everybody into parking in a row, if there's going to be no lines? Are you going to put temporary lines in during the high season?
What we're doing is, we'll set this edge up, and so that will be simple, this line will come up through here, and then we'll, at some point in the high season, we'll probably have to have somebody directing traffic.
Yeah, it's just never, it's never simple for most people.
No, it's not, and it's not efficient, you know, people put a lot of room between themselves.
Person gets out of line, the rest of them go, and that's it, you're all done.
Where's the current well and septic?
The well is located out here, the septic is up here.
Okay. So that exit driveway, do you plan on making the exit driveway wider?
This one here is actually an in-and-out.
Okay.
So yes, we'd like to make that a little bit wider. It's very tight right now, and there's some brush that we need to take down for sightlines, but it's a little, we'd just like to add a couple feet, so it's a regulation 24 feet wide.
So the other one is going to remain?
That's an exit-only.
Exit-only.
Any consideration to make that two-way?
Which one?
The one-way one right now?
Well, the, it can be two-way, it's wide enough, it's actually bigger than 24 feet. A lot of the times, it just has to do with the fact that if we can control it this way, everybody comes in through the parking lot. I mean, this way, then, you know, they're not, they're a little too close to.
It's violated, constantly, so, just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, we'd really like to keep the through traffic, you know, trying to find a parking space away from the front of the church until everybody's leaving.
Yeah. See, to me, coming in, because you've got the drop-off there, makes more sense for that driveway than having everybody go through the parking lot and try to get to the drop-off.
It's just that when everyone's coming in, they have to come past the church, which means that all the pedestrians have to go through that traffic.
Yeah, I know, it's very complicated.
Yeah, it's a little more.
People have to think.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if you want to drop off, you need to come in here, and then come through here and drop off.
I will tell you, most of the people go the other way to drop off. Constant problem, yeah. Wish it would go that way.
What's on the backside of the proposed parking? Is it in that corner? Is that all, is that wooded?
All this is wooded right now, yeah. All this is wooded right now, yeah, and we would leave that the way it is. We're, only, the only trees that are being removed are the ones that are just right here in this crossing. We have plenty of room to work with, and we stay outside of the wetlands on the sides.
I'm sort of familiar, but have you, has there been any comment, all, no neighbors are...
Not according to any of these meetings at this point, so. But there was a public hearing for wetlands.
It's a long way to a neighbor from there.
Right, I just don't know where the neighbors are.
There's a few residences across the street.
Right, on the other side, yeah.
Is it illegal in the parking area?
I think they'd be happy if they had parking off the road.
Well, and also the lighting, sounds like you're toning it down a little.
That's right.
Really? Anything else?
All right.
I guess it's got to be better than it is now, so, thank you.
So again, I think we should consider...
I favor say aye.
Any other questions or comments? I think the care that they've taken to preserve both the wetlands and the character of the surrounding neighborhood is commendable, we appreciate it, notwithstanding my question about making it a two-way highway. I just want to be sure that you thought it all the way through, so. All right? Looking for a motion? Make a motion that we accept a lot of PC's proposal for the St. Catherine's Church to expand the parking lot. Are there any caveats on that?
Just like to put is that it may be known at this time to the application, the town engineer, environmental officer required prior, at least a week prior to onset of any earth disturbance, applicant must agree to any requirements proposed by the town engineer in compliance status prior to project work. Second, construction shall be monitored by the town engineer, environmental officer, and compliance officer necessary to ensure proper construction methods are followed. Third, the applicant shall ensure that any available proper erosion, sedimentation control techniques are used in the site to protect the site, and any abiding properties from erosion and sedimentation problems. Finally, lighting shall be handled as proposed on the submitted plans, and any change in lighting may be required to be approved by the commission.
Can I make one last question? As far as walking from the parking lot to the church, is there designated a sidewalk?
I think that's lit all the way out to the parking lot too, which is good. Do we have a motion, like, we have a second?
A second along with the additions from Hiram.
With the conditions that were stated by, so. All favor say aye? Opposed? Cast? Thank you. Some great drawings, thank you very much. All right, next topic is the discussion and possible action regarding the incentive housing opportunity zone, which we are also now referring to as the workforce housing overlay zone, or who's, woes.
Do you remember copying the regulation?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This evening, Glenn Fowler from Planet Metrics is here as well, if any other questions come up. Just a brief recap of where we've all been on this saga.
Journey.
A number of things have gone on, and I just wanted to sort of remind everybody where we've been. Initially, when we started out, this really was a regulation that was started by Concord Square. We actually started this process and looking at this whole process even as part of the charrette process back in late 2009, so it's been a while. There were a number of surveys, sites that were surveyed to decide whether they'd be possibly applicable to this regulation. That approach was decided by the commission and a number of folks not to be the best way to approach this particular subject. And so when we were able and fortunate enough to have Glenn take a look at this, there was a matrix that was proposed, was supplied to the commission about what all the other towns in the state have done, was a fairly large matrix, and talked a little bit about what each of the other towns have done and whether or not their regulations were compliant or not, but it gave a really good synopsis of what other towns in the state have done. So I think that was very helpful as well. In addition to that, what we also did at the last meeting, which I thought was, from my point of view, was very helpful, was had David Fink come and talk in generality, general terms about the workforce housing regulations in the state and why they should be enacted here as well. Secondly, we heard from Maria Di Marco, who does the administration for a number of towns in the state, and I thought she gave a very clear representation of exactly how the administration would be handled, so that it does not become a problem similar to some of the ones that we've experienced more recently with some of these types of things. Very important from my point of view as well. And then, thirdly, we heard from Ed LaMontaigne from the Simsbury Housing Authority, and I think that the bottom line of that discussion was that the housing authority probably has, more than has their hands full right now with what they've got on their plate, and so that perhaps an administrator such as Di Marco or another administrator, not necessarily Maria's firm, but could handle this very professionally and very carefully if the town decide to enact this regulation. Glenn and I talked briefly about the workforce housing overlay zone regulation that you have in front of you this evening. Just a couple of notes for that before the discussion on that starts, is that there were some changes we made in the initial draft, and those are represented in the red print that you see in front of you. I want to make sure that everyone has the most current one as well. There's one little sort of outtake about halfway down the first page, and it says the commission could adopt one or more of these five options. And actually, if you look slightly to the left, it's actually six options. So just wanted to make sure that everybody has that one that says six options, okay. We talked a little bit about the fact that there are a number of different options that the commission could have. My suggestion, my recommendation, is that we take a look at all six of those as part of our regulation to give people the most flexibility. They might in fact come in with a particular option that might be appropriate for a particular area in one situation, and the commission could approve that or not. They also may come up with a blending of those options as well, and that's sort of what the second one does, it talks about mixed housing and development, including maybe a combination of single-family duplexes and three units attached. And I've seen some of those developments in other towns, and they're very attractive as well. So that's certainly a possibility in some areas. May not be appropriate for all areas, but certainly could be a possibility in some areas. Obviously, the regulation allows for duplexes, it allows for single families, and then it gets into permitted principal uses, section 10, N. 5. It talks about, in all those cases, densities up to a certain number of units. Doesn't necessarily mean that that number of units is what the commission is going to be required to approve. In fact, these are all an overlay zone, so the commission gets to look at very carefully what any proposal would be before you decide to approve anything. But they all say up to that number of units, so it doesn't mean you have to look at 20 units per acre, or 10 units per acre, or in the case of single-family units, up to six units per acre. It can be up to those number of units as well. There is a question at the bottom of that page, which I wanted to get some feedback from the commission, and that talked about specifically, it says, "The dimensional standards of the underlying zone shall continue to apply, except that the zoning commission may, through a granting of a separate special permit, modify any dimensional standard in order to..." and then there are a series of standards that it talks about. Basically, what that requires is that somebody to come in for a special, a separate special permit in addition to one special permit to land these zones in that particular area. And I think it's important, and Glenn can talk to this later as well if you'd like, whether the commission wants to see two separate special, separate permits, the special permits, or whether it can be done as one application and include both of those things. It's probably, you know, a little bit a fine point, but I just want to make sure that the commission knows that you're going to get to see it as a special permit, it's going to be a public hearing, and you're going to get to see everything at the same time. Whether you want two special permits or one special permit, may be a bit of a fine point, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Glenn has pointed out very clearly and well that at least 20% of the units constructed under one of these developments shall be deed-restricted and affordable. And I think as part of the agenda package this time, you had a copy of the affordable limits that were given to the commission last time. They're not really all that low, if you really look at them. I think a lot of people would say they were surprised by those units, and I think that has to do with obviously the affordable levels in the town. The other thing that needs to be mentioned is that the statement for, with regard to the term of the deed restriction, at 30 years is the recommendation, I think we can say recommendation at this point in time, but the commission could change that to anything it wants to really, a longer term can be established. We could even make them affordable, quote "affordable" in perpetuity if we wanted to. 30 years is a good time. I think it's important for folks to keep in mind that should this go to hearing, and should it ultimately be considered for adoption by the commission, the idea is to try to make it so that something will actually happen. And if it's, if it's so restrictive and non-productive in terms of the people that are going to build it, then perhaps deed restricting them in perpetuity might not cause people to rush to do this kind of thing, and maybe we, 30 years is probably a long enough time. That would be my recommendation as well. We would get a report from the administrator on, say, January 31st of every year specifying that the units are in compliance, so we would know immediately whether anybody's out of compliance, we don't have to wait five or 10 or 20 years to figure out that there's a problem. So I think that's really important, and that goes to the, all the administrative material that Glenn had provided to us before, which I think was very, very helpful in terms of saying how this would work. We do get an administrator to do this, we can talk about this during the actual public hearing as well, as to how that exactly would work, what the town's responsibilities would be, what the developers' responsibilities would be as well. It talks about overall character, and this is really important for people to understand, building, design, and construction guidelines. Glenn and I talked a little bit about this, we're skating on a little bit of thin ice here, but we think that it's important that if the regulation is adopted, that people feel comfortable with the fact that what's going to get constructed next to them is in fact going to be pretty close to in keeping with the character of existing neighborhoods. We think that's really important for people to understand, that the building placement will be on lots such that it won't be terribly out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. We talked about building mass, for example, that's addressed there as well, roofs and mechanical equipment. And then what's kind of really nice is that a picture, picture is always worth at least more than a thousand words, and there are design elements which are encouraged or required on the left-hand side of that page, and on the right-hand side of the page, there are elements that are discouraged or not particularly appropriate for general neighborhoods. Now, there are some structures that some of you may recognize, I don't know that any of them are from around here, some of them may well be, but we hope that no one's offended by that, it's just that we would propose that the ones on the left-hand side would be the ones that would be more appropriate for most of the situations that we have. Same thing we did with the duplex dwellings, Glenn put together a really nice matrix with regard to townhouses as well. Some of those could easily be in front of the commission in the next year or so. Again, those are elements which we would encourage, we would discourage the ones on the right-hand side. And then finally, the multifamily dwellings as well. There's an old mill structure there, which looks not unlike some that we might see in town, and there are some other sections of terrafill, for example, that look very, very familiar to people in those neighborhoods as well. Again, on the right-hand side of that page, number eight, those are structures that we don't think are particularly attractive, that would fit in really well with the neighborhoods. So bottom line, and certainly willing to have any questions that you might have on this at all, bottom line, it's our recommendation that we get this finally shaped up, put it in a regulation form, and schedule a public hearing for it to see what folks have to say about it. We think that we've taken into account all the concerns and questions that the commission had from day one, it's been a long process, we do need to draw it to a close by the end of June, so we'd really like to suggest, for example, that if April 1st is possible, we'd love to get it to public hearing on April 1st.
Well, I'll start, I was unfortunately not here the evening when there was a nice big open dialogue amongst the commissioners about things that we were interested or concerned, and I'll echo what Hiram said, we've been at this for a while, and it's taken sort of a journey around issues that we've had, but I think we really, as I have thought about this and see some of the things that were really, made it hard to get our arms around initially, I think a lot of them are addressed here. For instance, I think the six different forms this could take, realizing that it isn't a single application, I think the idea of just dropping an overlay zone on the CLP property without any plans or anything else, not that that's not a good place to have one of these, it's just that I don't think we were comfortable thinking that it could be a 200-unit apartment building or a series of small townhouses or what, because there weren't really those kind of plans. And now we have a regulation that would allow the develop, first of all, encourage the developers to come for pre-review with us, and hopefully we could do that jointly with the design review board, so that we could get some head nodding in terms of both how it looks and how it would be used. Coupled with the fact that the number of units, the density of the units, and whether they were single-family or apartment buildings, would be appropriate for each individual site, as opposed to you apply for an IHOZ, and that has options across the board. What we're going to have here is the ability to say that this planned development is, gets the benefit of the density, as long as it's appropriate for the site, so I think that's huge. And then the third thing is the big question we had, which was addressed at the last meeting, about how would this be administered and could it be administered, and I think we got into some interesting discussions about the difference between rents and owns and how this works, and I think I have a much better appreciation for that. And then the last thing I'll say, and I'll look for comments, is that I do, I do now completely understand how this is really important to the town, to take advantage of developers who want to bring this kind of housing to our town, and to do nothing is not the right answer here, and so I think we've struck a good balance between optionality on the way these things look and work, something that I think will hopefully encourage developers to look for opportunities in our town to put in these kinds, and I think in the long run, be very additive to the quality of life in Simsbury.
I agree with what's been said, but I might add to it too, I would just want to be sure that the language of this document, when it's finally done, would give us maximum discretion in interpreting what a developer might want to do, including design, because you've got some very detailed design guidelines here, but a developer may have a creative solution that we might feel is a good idea, but non-conforming to our design guidelines, so I would think that between us and the DRB, that we could judge on whether or not it made sense for our town. That was one item. The other item was, we say we have to be, the units have to be served by water, sewer, and sidewalks, but to me, it's conceivable that you could have a small project that are individual residences that are not within an area that has sewers in this town.
I think that's, I think that's possible, I think in most cases, the density is such that you probably would want water and sewer, however, you know, as you pointed out, it's certainly possible there might be a unique situation, and I think that's one of the points that I pointed out there, that the commission has the ability to waive any particular requirement, and I think that's, we need to check before the hearing and make sure that's really clear and people are comfortable with that.
And my third item is, I think we really do have to draft some language that addresses the eventuality of non-conformance and enforcement. I mean, it's nice that we would get a report once a year, but if we get the report and we have a situation that's a problem, like we've seen in this town before, we ought to have some general definition of how we enforce what we've approved.
Okay, I think we can come up with something like that, I certainly could talk to town attorney as well, but we certainly need to make sure that that's addressed when we go to hearing, absolutely.
Hiram, has, Bob, has he gone through these?
No.
No, 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 so we haven't seen any of these.
I can certainly tell you this, though, that Glenn has drafted them for a number of different towns.
Oh yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
And we're both comfortable with where, but we certainly want to run it by Bob before the hearing, my question.
I think my only concern is that somebody, you know, misses what we're trying to do here, and then we come in and we end up in an issue with the developer trying to direct them to what we wanted, not really what they wanted, and the neighbors are upset, I do have to, you know, err on that side, just make sure that we do have a little teeth in here to make sure that we steer them the way the design review board, and we want the end product to come out, and the neighbors are happy as well, so.
Sure, absolutely.
So before it ever went after public hearing, it would go to Bob before?
Yes, it'll go to him, and I'd like to have his comments before the hearing, although sometimes what he does is give me his comments the day of the hearing, which is helpful, but I will ask him, I will get them to him probably within the next day or so, and we can have those comments back as soon as he can get them done.
I do want to say this is a great layout, it makes it much more simpler to be able to look at bullets and whatever, they did a great job.
Glenn's done a great job helping us on this journey, so.
Hiram, what would, before the public hearing, what would get laid out to the public?
Irem, before the public hearing, what would get laid out to the public, information-wise?
The regulation itself, the draft. I think actually it's interesting, too, that they get the income limits.
I think so.
I think that's very helpful.
It's a good point, because we've learned some, I think where we started to where we are now, my perception is completely different, but the town's perception is probably still the same. Everyone thinks it's low-income housing. There's a bad feeling about what we're trying to do with this.
Sure.
I think you're going to need to educate them the best we can coming into the public hearing to make it a better meeting.
Sure. And I think it's important, too, and it's important, you know, this meeting being recorded, so I want to make people know that 80% of these units are market rate units. Only 20% are the workforce units. And even those units, as you see by the income levels, are still not, they're not really low. And so that's important. You're absolutely right, and I think that's a really good point.
You know, and to his point, I just want to say from my past experience working at Avon, you know, we went through Avon Old Farms Crossing, I don't know if you remember that, Glenn, 20 years ago, and it was very testy to public hearing meetings. And it was because of so much disinformation out there, what people didn't understand who was going to be moving in next door. And it ended up being a complete non-issue, a complete non-issue. The project came out very well. There's really been no issues up there whatsoever. To this date, I haven't heard anything bad about the project that came in. And again, it was just because it was not enough information or disinformation that got out.
I used to work for the federal government. There was a saying that we had, that there was nothing like a little factual information to screw up a really good theory. So if you're opposed to something, you know, factual information might in fact actually get you back on track. So I absolutely agree with you.
A few comments. It's not clear to me, looking at what we've got proposed now, that the timing of when certain information is available for us to be considering it, for the public to be considering it as well. I think the important thing that we learned, and some of the things that were talked about with the Plank Hill Road situation, was looking at something in the abstract doesn't work. So if someone says, "We're thinking of putting something in a certain piece of property," we're going to want to know, "What is it you're talking about? Show us drawings. What's it looked like?" When you say townhomes, what do you mean townhomes? When you say multi-unit, you know, housing, what does that mean? So I think, for me, it's very important that there's a lot, there's more done up front than I suppose is typically done, and that we're looking at more than just a proposal to make use of a certain site in a certain way. So I know we've talked a lot about what the different end result would be, but I think it's a question of when we know, when we see those things, which probably is harder for the developer. We're asking to put together plans and drawings at an earlier stage than perhaps they're used to doing. I think that that's important for the public to be able to take a look at it and see, as someone said a minute ago, "What's my neighbor going to look like?", at least the housing anyway. So that's one part of it. The second thing, similarly, though, we also understand at a very early process, early in the process, how it's going to work administratively. How is it going to be taken care of? Who's paying the cost for the administrative handling of this? If it's done by some agency, who's paying for that? How is it paid for into the future? So those are things, again, before we have any kind of consideration, I think those things need to be known. I don't see a lot of value in someone just saying, "I'm interested in putting an IHC in this area", without knowing some of those kinds of details. That's my first point. Second, and that goes to 10 and 3, and as to 10 and 4, as I understand it, we're talking about being consistent, I think Rob may have mentioned, being consistent with what the area is zoned for. So we're not talking about the ability to put townhomes where there are currently single-family houses. I guess I sense there's some flexibility there, but in general, it's being recommended that we be consistent in that we're, if it's single-family, we're putting in single families. And we're not going to put in duplexes next to single families if that's the zone.
I'm sure that, I don't think that's right, actually.
I don't think it's right. Instead of saying...
They cannot do it, or that they can do it?
I don't think it's right that we would limit that, because there are no developments of duplexes in Simsbury. So, for instance, the, you know, not to beat up on the Plank Hill Road facility, but I think you have to have the flexibility for a developer to come in and say he wants four attached units in that property. And then it will be up to us to say whether we think that that fits the character and all the rest of the abilities. So I don't, I don't think you can dictate that it matches the current character.
It seems like the plans we have now, though, shouldn't talk about that as being a direction to be in, that we're talking about putting in these different possible uses consistent with what surrounds it.
Well, I, yeah, I took, I took that to mean, you know, that we're not going to put one of these in the middle of an industrial zone. Or that, so consistent means that if it's a residential area, it's going to, the houses are going to be residential. They don't have to be single-family houses, single-family. I think that's the distinction that I would make.
I think that maybe what we could do is, I'll talk to Glenn, and we could perhaps tweak the wording a little bit to talk about things like compatibility as opposed to strict consistency. And that may help a good deal. I know the Design Review Board, interestingly enough, often talks about that in terms of the fact that it's not exactly identical, you know, all the time, but it's compatible, or it somehow provides a different look on the street, and that's acceptable as well. So I think that as we go through these, if we change the wording to something like "compatible" and we work with the Design Review Board as well, I think that'll be a really a big help toward getting to the point where you decide either it's acceptable or not acceptable, but that might be helpful.
I mean, almost by definition, it has to have higher density than the surrounding areas, so that's what this is all about.
Yes, but I think there'd be certainly public concern if we talk about putting a bunch of townhomes in an area that's strictly single-family houses.
If they were done right, and it was an area that was, I mean, I actually could see that happening well.
Well, we should be, we still should be sensitive to the neighbors.
Right.
If the neighbors are up in arms over it, I don't think we want to force the issue.
I have a question. I'm trying to figure out how this is different than other overlay zones or, you know, some of the rules and regs that sort of dictate that timing, you know, when we hear things. I'm not seeing it much different. I'm seeing it as there's a process, is it mirroring the other processes that we have already said are okay? We're going to get it beforehand, we're going to get a pre-application. I guess I'm looking at it as, I'm not seeing it very, I mean, is it very different than the other types of things that we are very comfortable with?
I think it's similar in one way, I mean, different in another way. Let me explain.
Yeah.
What I have tried to do here, and I talked to Glenn a little bit about, is trying to make sure that the process is clear.
Right.
So that we get it on the table and in front of people as early in the process as possible.
Right.
I think that's important, so that everybody, the neighbors and so on, can see what it is. The other thing, and so, and we're trying to do that as much as possible with all the things that we deal with. The thing that's different about this is the product out the other end.
Right.
Nothing else that we have is like this right now, so it is a different product. I think the process is the same. How we evaluate it hopefully will be the same logical way we go through everything else.
That's kind of what I was speaking to, it's the process, because I think that's your concern. It's like, you know, is this going to be a process that, you know, we aren't going to know what's going to happen before it's too late? Seems to me the process is similar, so regardless of, if it's really a bad idea, we're going to know upfront. I mean, that's my...
It's got to go through here, right?
It's got to go through here.
It does. And we can work to clean that language up to make that a little bit clearer, to make sure that that's, people are comfortable with that.
Just kind of following up on some of the concerns here, we don't want to do something that nobody wants, but how did you come up with the 30-year deed restriction? Could you talk to me about that? Because I'm wondering if there's some flexibility there where we say, "Okay, why don't we do a 10-year deed restriction with a 10-year automatic, you know, option to extend and then two fives after that, just so in case something comes along where we want to remove that restriction, it might make, give us as a town more flexibility or this commission more?"
I've got some specific thoughts about that, but Glenn, do you want to, I mean, it seems to me that the front end of this, whoever's going to build this thing, needs to have some idea of a baseline as to whether they're going to be able to make a dollar doing this. There's no question about that. If there's a lot of flexibility in how long these affordability requirements are going to apply, and you upset that formula to some extent, and perhaps to the extent where it doesn't work anymore, or the uncertainty, I mean, we always hear what developers want to know is they want an answer and they want it within a certain period of time, whether the answer is yes or no. But if we create so much uncertainty that they're not willing to go forward, I think we're defeating our own purpose. So if 30 is not the right number, if it's 20 or 80, I don't know, but 30 is what we've talked about and trying to...
Is it determined by the state, or?
A little bit of a quick history lesson. The state first started adopting regulations that gives only commissioners the ability to do affordable housing projects, the general, the deed restriction time period was 20 years. And they recognized that 20 years disappears actually fairly quickly in terms of providing for affordable units. And whoever, let's say it's a rental unit, the landlord gets a windfall at year 20 to 21, and if it's a purchaser, they get a windfall. So the state said, "Well, hang on a second here. If somebody is entitled to a higher density", and that's what we're talking about here, what we've seen in some of the other affordable projects in town, then what is the appropriate balance, as Irem put it? And what they said was, "Okay, let's say that the minimum is 30 years." So if you're adopting a strict IHC regulation, I, my advice to you would be, you need to be at 30 years or longer. Since we are going offline and we're doing a regulation we think works for Simsbury, we can pick any number we want. I have seen communities around the state where the affordability restrictions, once in place, are now expiring, and they regret not having a longer term because the need for workforce housing doesn't suddenly disappear at a certain timeframe. So I think it's a delicate balance, and I would encourage you to, you pick a number which you think works for you. Some communities have done perpetuity, some have done 50, 40, 30. There aren't many that have gone less than that because they feel, again, for this higher density, they'd like to have that workforce housing be there for a while.
Glenn, what works for the market? 30, 40, 50? What's most prominent?
The market's working right...
It's never going to get off the road if we don't have it attractive, so.
The density numbers that are being suggested in here, I think, are attractive to developers. And again, as Irem pointed out, given the income guidelines in Simsbury, et cetera, it's not a huge penalty, if you will, to provide for these affordable units. So at the present time, if there are developments around the state going on under the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, which is 30% of the units for 30 years, this is only 20% of the units for at least 30 years. So it's working in other places, is my only, my only observation that I can give you in my experience.
Is 30 also, because we have, it's a traditional sort of mortgage-type thing, 30 years, you know, it just seems like, it sounds like a normal thing, but I think more compelling is how you make this attractive to people who actually want to do it.
Yeah, I think, again, people around the state are doing it. I think the only observation that I've seen is that as, around the state, as these affordability restrictions are expiring, the property owners in place, in an affordable unit, who now get this windfall. And everybody's sort of looking at this situation thinking, "Hang on a second here. Your ability to sell your unit just went from, let's say, 180 to 240."
Right.
And all that happened was the calendar flipped over, that one day? And they're saying, "Well, hang on, maybe that, why isn't that unit available for somebody else like you? Why should that person in place at that time get that windfall?"
That will happen no matter what, right?
It can.
Yeah.
I think the, as the chairman pointed out...
There's a lot of factors, right.
I think, as the chairman pointed out, I think that the goal here in terms of providing for some housing opportunities and diversity of housing, and I think there's multiple protections in here. Listening to the commission's discussion tonight, I think it's encouraged a pre-application discussion in here. If somebody comes in to have an actual application to you, they're going to have to declare to you what direction they're going in. So they're going to have to declare whether or not it's a mixed-use, a mixed-housing, multi-family townhouse, and they're going to have to show you a sketch plan. And you're going to approve the zone change on that basis and that understanding. And then still, there's a special permit process to follow. So if I get you to agree to a townhouse and then come in with different townhouses than I showed you, the commission has the ability at that point in time to say, "Hang on, that's not what we agreed to. That's not what we're talking about." So we really do have built in some belt and suspenders here to make sure that what is proposed works for Simsbury in that kind of location.
And I wanted to go to Vaughn's, I think it was Vaughn you said about, was it you talked about the fact that you know more now, but not everybody in the town does? I'm not sure how the best way is to do that. I mean, the whole process that we went through with the charrette was a whole education process at some level. We don't probably have the time to do that, nor should we do that. But I think it is going to be us, up to us as ambassadors of the information, so if people do talk to you about it, you can sort of help them understand it. And it's possible, and I'm sure that you already have this, but if we had maybe a true-false fact sheet that says, "True, you know, workforce housing does X", and I think really sort of distilled type of informational one-sheet paper where you can hand it out at the public hearing, or you can do it, you could even publish it in the paper prior to, I just, I think you're right. I think it solves a lot of anxiety issues and, and you know what? I don't think people realize this is actually a good thing for the town.
Yeah.
And it builds a whole infrastructure of people who really want to be here.
We can anticipate the Q and A, right?
Oh, yeah. That's what I mean.
Sure.
You get ahead of it. You step ahead of it and you get...
Yeah, so I, I'm glad you said that, Amy, because I think we are going to have to actually, I mean, we don't, I mean, we're going to ultimately be the ones to vote on this, so, but we want to be sure that, because we've invested a lot of time in this, that we get a proper presentation of what it is that we're supporting or presenting. And so some visual aids, some of the things that were compelling to me, like the developments that are on the website that you sent to us, you know, that, you know, pictures speak well. But to understand, maybe, maybe we can get together, Irem, and just be sure that we have a presentation that people can speak to.
A press release to the local newspapers.
Yeah.
We can only do something with SCTV if you're willing to hear.
Or that, yes.
I'd be glad to do that. Any of us would, I think, so that, I think that would be helpful. And we're not, we're not trying to sell this snake oil here.
Well, I was just about to say, we don't want to come off as slick, but on the other hand, there is a little bit of a sales pitch here, and that's, that's true with everything. That's true with anything.
We want, we want to give it its best, best chance from its merits.
Right. So basically, we just want to talk about the facts and frankly say, "This is why we have gone through this process as a, as a commission and are entertaining this, because it has these types of qualities and characters that we think are going to be good for the town."
Both you, Glenn and Irem, made reference to 20% or 30% of units, but does that mean that we're precluding doing a single 100% 10-unit project?
No.
So we could do six or eight single-family residences entirely under this program, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here. It's a minimum of 20% of the units being affordable. So if somebody wanted to do eight units, all meeting the income guidelines...
All affordable.
They could. If they wanted to use this regulation to do eight all-market rate, my response to you would be, "No, the regulation does not provide for that."
Okay, yeah.
So I think, I'll work with Irem in terms of a fact sheet, et cetera. I did make some changes based on the commission's discussion. I just wanted to kind of roll through with you for a moment if I could. I think on the first page, 10 and 3, number 1A, it says that the overall process for development within the WHOZ district includes establishment of the district. And what I added in here would suggest for inclusion is including plans and drawings and a declaration of the proposed type of sub-district.
You're adding that in?
Yes. In other words, I want to make it clear that drawings are required. You have to see what it looks like, and you have to declare your proposed sub-district at that time. The other thing I've identified on page three, the discussion that we had earlier about public water and sewer, you'll notice that under 10 and 8, paragraphs 2 and 3, both contain language that says, unless modified by the commission or otherwise approved by the commission, but paragraph 1 does not. And I felt that, again, my recommendation for your consideration was that because we're dealing with somewhat higher densities, water and sewer would be a good protective thought for the commission in terms of public health, that there's not likely to be water or sewer issues because we have public water and well, excuse me, public water and sewer. If you felt that well and septic might be possibilities, you could add language that says, unless, unless otherwise approved by the commission, all developments shall have public water and sewer. And that gives you the ability to at least consider it in these other areas.
Well, I can see that if you had an 8 to 10-unit project that was 100% controlled, right? If you had, if you had eight little houses, you could do that, and you don't have to do it along, along Hot Metal Street where you have water and sewer.
I can, just from doing this for a long time, I can tell you that's unlikely-
Yeah.
... because of the septic requirements, for example. But I think we can put that wording in there, it doesn't really hurt anything.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They would have to prove it through the Health Department-
Oh, I understand.
... and so on. I just think it's unlikely, but that's fine, I don't have any problem with it.
I think you're putting it in there, just as, speaks to your concern.
I'm under the impression, I may have forgotten this now, but when, when, when we first did the state project down, down the elderly housing, that was something like 40 units all on septic. Now, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I mean, it has been done in this town for multiple units. So even if we had a restriction, no more than 10 units or something, I think that, then you, you bring into play a lot more sites than you would if you limited by water and sewer.
And I think as Hiram points out, there's some situations in here, right now, this requires public water and sewer. You might find yourself with a site that sewer's available, but not public water. This might give you the ability to do a well. And so, again, I, I'm not uncomfortable with the commission having that flexibility, and if you decide that the densities in that location just make you uncomfortable, then you can say, we are not about to modify that language, and we're going to stick to our guns on that, so.
Hiram, on the septic, because I agree, you know, that we should have the flexibility, are you saying that a design septic system is going to be more than long-term hookup to the sewer system? And the reason why I say that is only because what we went through with the West Street project, how expensive the hookup fees were, and we don't want that to deter a developer that wants to put a small project in, and then he's saddled with these huge hookup fees. So is it cheaper for the septic system in the long run versus a sewer hookup?
I think, I think we won't know that until we see the specifics of it, Jerry. I think that providing the flexibility to do that, if it's okay, is fine.
Yeah.
I think that what happens when you get even two buildings that are connected, they go to the same septic system, they're going to be considered what's called a community septic system, and they're going to have to go through DEP.
Right.
And nobody wants to go through that process. They would much rather go through a department-led process. And so, it may be cheaper, just because they don't want to go through that process and spend three years of getting a permit. But I don't know, I think the flexibility is fine, I don't have any problem with that at all. I think the commission will make a determination of the time it sees it, based upon reports from the town engineer, the Health Department, and whoever else, and the applicant's engineer, as to whether that's feasible or not.
And then my other comment is, there may be some areas where we don't even think of this going in, that may go in where there's no sewers. It'd be such a long run and a burden for the developer to bring the sewer out there.
There may be areas-
That, we may be shooting ourselves in the foot by not having that flexibility, so.
Very possible.
I do have a question. I want to avoid diving into what a lot of people would call minutia, but regarding the affordability levels in Simsbury, this income statement that you put together, did you do any stressing of, like, the local mill and the available mortgage rate on this? Because the, one, the mill rate is going to be out of date very soon, and, you know, arguably, mortgage rates are, could be on the rise in the not-too-distant future. And I, I would just like to see how that affects, you know, the estimated amount available for mortgage and potential monthly rent for, for the units.
I think at the bottom of the page, my recollection of that is, are those line items individual, those are mortgage rates as they change?
Well, this is at, at sale, though, correct? Is that, how far?
Well, the numbers, forgive you if I'm wrong, but the numbers below that, there's 3.5%, which is the highlighted one, but then below that, it goes 4% up to 6%.
Right, okay, right, I see.
So that's it. You know, the mill rate's going to change, there's no question, we could recalculate it when we go to a hearing, I don't know what the actual mill rate's going to be.
Oh, no, just to, just to stress it, you know, just to see where it kind of-
I think we could update it. I think if, memory service correct, is what you would call in Excel a circular function, because the mill rate ties into the income, which ties into how much mortgage you can afford. So you have to, you have to pick a scenario for a mill rate and run with it.
Okay.
And since the mill rate doesn't technically get set until May, some, you know, or whenever it gets set, the most recent one we have is the current one, which I'm pretty sure is what that, that's built on, so.
Right, and then the median family income for Hartford is Hartford County, not Hartford.
Not Simsbury.
Not Simsbury proper, it's Hartford County.
It's the area median income is declared by HUD, it's published.
Right.
So these rates here aren't resale price, they're the sales price at, okay, I got you.
Gotcha. And it just sort of shows, and part of my discussion, I think, with the commission, could have been back in, it was either December that was, what was the date on that? Was that December? November. November, yeah, so that was our December meeting, is that the challenge we can sometimes have is that as interest rates rise, what somebody who bought a unit can sell it for actually goes down. So there's a little bit of risk here for purchasers in these, if you're going in for a short-term flip, it's kind of a, it's a little risky.
Right.
I think if the commission, or with Hiram, want to sort of give us a target date, we can prepare materials.
I was going, that's where I was headed next, is I think we should shoot for April 1st. I mean, that's, I think it's a month, I think, do we have a meeting on the 18th?
We do.
Okay, so I think by the 18th, what I'd like to see the staff do, or with, with our help, is get, you know, some deliverables for the meeting. In other words, you know, have what will be available on the website, what we could, the fact sheet that Amy mentioned, or something that tries to take, get, you know, take the benefit of all of our journey and try to summarize it in a way that we could present it. And if any of the commissioners has, have ideas, even rough ideas, that you would think would be helpful. And then, Hiram, let's see if we can't, in that timeframe, get a slot on SCTV, or an article in The Patch, or, you know, whatever, an interview, those kinds of things that would at least give us something else that we could point to before the meeting itself, so that people, it'll either rile them up, or it'll calm them down.
I think the video from last meeting would be a good thing for people to look at. I mean, it is, you know, an hour and a half long, but, you know, just my review, I mean, it seemed like it served its purpose.
Yeah. Okay?
Great.
So let's do that, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for meeting.
A draft policy for stormwater management and drainage design guidelines.
This is very short, very quick.
Excellent.
This is, this is something I gave, I think I gave to the commission, this was guidelines that we had worked out sometime ago when we did a low-impact development study, and I can't remember, did we talk about this last meeting? No?
I don't remember.
No, I don't either. This is just something, and it certainly wouldn't expect you to ask this evening, but this is just a concept that we're trying to work the low-impact development, stormwater drainage guidelines into the, yeah, into the regulations. But ultimately, we think, rather than take a giant step and cause a lot of confusion, what we'd really like to do is start this as a policy. I've run this policy by the town engineer, and he agrees that it's a good place to start, it's a good way to start. So all I would ask is that you take a look at this, at the next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda again, decide whether you can see your way clear to adopting this as a policy. Basically, what it does is it puts the low-impact development, stormwater drainage guidelines, lets applicants know that we're considering that when they come in, that they've got, at least take a look at them. They don't necessarily have to do everything that's in there, but they've at least got to take a look at it and explain to us why they can't do certain things. If we're trying to minimize the stormwater impacts to streams and erosion and so on, why they can't do it. That's basically just that.
So the Simsbury Stormwater Design Guidelines exists, and so this policy now says that they have to comply.
They have to take a look at it and actually-
And tell us how they, how they are in compliance.
Correct.
Okay.
But not with every single, did you say not with every single aspect of it?
That's right, there are many, there are many components to that.
Okay.
There are ways that they can comply on their site, and if they can't, for example, in the center, if they can't comply on their site, there are ways that they can comply off-site as well. So we're starting to work through what's called a stormwater bank, but we don't have those things finalized yet. Actually, we don't even have the state legislation to allow us to do that legally. So we're being very cautious and very careful to make sure that we can do it properly before we actually get into it. But in the meantime, the Conservation Commission is looking at this right now as well, the Planning Commission is looking at it, and the Design Review Board, and they asked them to look at it as well. So everybody will take a look at it approximately at the same time, and hope to get all the women's boards on, on board with it. So that's basically the idea.
Well, I personally think it sounds like a good idea for the long run of our, you know, environment in our town, and just in general, with all the great water we have around here, we don't want it to be all polluted, and so on and so forth, so it's a good idea.
I think that also, I could tell you that the stormwater design guidelines that we did are being really well-received by people that have looked at them.
And John Ford, that put those together for us, actually submitted those to Congress for New Urbanism for another, actually, a national award in the next month out in Salt Lake City. So we'll see what happens with that, but it's very interesting, a lot of towns haven't done it yet, and I get a lot of calls every week about, what did you do, and what does it look like, and so on. And they're on our town website now, so you can take a look at them, so, been very helpful.
All right.